For Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBOR Boston and MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video, chat, or phone at betterhelp.com-public.
It's Here and Now. Packaging. It's not just what you and I rip open to arrive at the contents inside. I mean, think about it. The moment you lifted up that new iPhone box, not an accident. Brands put a lot of thought and a lot of money into packaging. So let's look back and look forward a little bit with Andrew Adam Newman, a senior reporter for the Retail Brew, published by Morning Brew. And he has a special series on the topic called Naturally: Package Deal. Andrew, welcome to Here and Now.
It's great to be with you, Scott.
So you've written about some cool examples over time, but before we get into those, what can good packaging, provocative packaging, do for a product?
It's really what kind of imprints on consumers. Maybe not even at a conscious level, but if you get so familiar with sort of the way a package feels in your hand, if the ritual of like opening an iPhone box, it's something that you sort of like imprints on you and something you genuinely enjoy, and it makes the product experiential in a way that you may not even be registering, but you are. And that's one of the reasons--
And it's by design, yeah?
Yes, and literally by design, yes.
Well, let's talk about tech packaging and iPhones. You've written about that. Years ago, when I was based in China, I spent a day in southern China with an Apple contractor. His company does the final steps of putting everything together before the boxes get on a plane to go to customers in, say, North America. And he described Apple's requirements. You have to treat the customer's box-opening experience as this religious one. You can't get it wrong. What is the Apple idea here? And how has it executed it?
The idea, and when you think about it, it actually really mirrors the way Apple introduces and markets its products. Eight months before something comes out, there's a big announcement that there's going to be something called the iPhone. People sort of speculate, they anticipate, they wait in line to get it. And then when you actually get it in your hands, the process is sort of mimicked. Open it slowly. It becomes sort of like an experience.
The box actually physically opens slowly, doesn't it?
Absolutely. It was designed in order to have a number of steps into build suspense and anticipation.
Well, let's dive into some well-known success with the iconic Coca-Cola bottle. I understand Coke was not always the number one soda out there. So what was the design there? What was the success there?
Well, Coca-Cola, like other sodas at the time, was not bottled. There wasn't what we know of now as the Coca-Cola Bottling Company. When it started to be put in a sort of a standard bottle, it was very popular when it was bottled, but it was also widely imitated by other brands of cola that had sort of like comically knockoff names. Coconola was one of them. Toca-Cola was another one.
Changed one letter.
So the whole idea of designing a bottle was to do something that could not be imitated.
And do we know, you know, what the trial and error was along the way?
It's great, Scott, because it's really been a happy accident. So a team gets this design brief, and they go to a library, and they find a cocoa pod. And they say, wow, that's interesting looking. It's got all of these ribs in it. That would be like something we could do when we form the glasses. It could have these ribs along the length of it. And then, of course, they made it more curvaceous. So the inspiration of it was a mistake, because there's not cocoa in Coca-Cola. There was cocaine at the time.
Yeah.
There was the coconut, but there wasn't cocoa in it. So in this very strange kind of like misheard direction, they modeled the bottle after the cocoa pod. But once they did it, it's this beautiful object that really fits well in the hand, that's really sort of functional. It was at first much more curvaceous than it is now in a way that people found sort of really interesting and provocative. People used to refer to it as the Mae West bottle.
And finally, Andrew, let me ask you about packaging and waste. Packaging can create a lot of it, and too much of it would be costly for the companies and to the factories, not to mention the sustainability angle to this. Is packaging changing in that direction, kind of skinnying down for that reason?
Not as much as it should. And of course, Scott, with packaging, it's not only--and we've talked about both of them. Of course, like, a Coke bottle is a package, but an iPhone box is also a package. There's also this company called Amazon that sends a lot of packaging out every day.
I've heard of it.
And a lot of the problems and what's destroying our oceans is all of this plastic film. And to try to like send a bottle of olive oil and not use bubble wrap, which is another sort of amazing kind of packaging wonder, to replace something like bubble wrap in a package and to get plastic out of the packaging stream and out of the waste stream is really challenging. There are alternatives to bubble wrap, but it's not bubble wrap, and you can't snap it.
That is Andrew Adam Newman of Retail Brew. We will link to his series of articles, Package Deal, at hereandnow.org. Andrew, great to talk to you. Thanks for the time.
You too, Scott. It's so great to speak with you.
And Here and Now is a Package Deal of its Own, production of NPR and WBOR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC.
And I'm Peter O'Dowd.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called for order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd? Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here, and call him as present. The invocation this afternoon will be delivered by the Reverend Adam Ayers, middle school pastor of Valid Church of God. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. So Reverend Ayers, we stand.
Thank you. If you bow your heads with me and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings, Lord. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor for bearing appropriate responsibilities. I pray for our mayor and for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I pray that you grant them the wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare and needs of the people, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set forth today, Lord. Please give an assurance of what would be pleasing to you and what would benefit those who love and work in our beloved Star City. And in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, let me welcome everybody here this afternoon. This is not really our second session, but we had briefings this morning, and we were very pleased with the information that was received. The council of the city of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. So I want to emphasize this, that we encourage citizens to apply for appointments to boards and committees. And it's very easy to do. You can contact the clerk's office, or you can go online, and they can guide you through that process. But we want citizens to participate, to be a part of that. Sometimes it's a struggle for us to pull people together to come out and be a part of the governing of this city. And so I want to encourage you, those who are here in the chamber maybe, and especially those that are listening, to come out and be a part and apply to be a part of these boards and commissions. We have a number of them. So if you just contact the clerk's office, it's an easy process by accessing the city's website. And let me give you that. It's www.roanookva.gov to complete an online application. All right. The next item up is presentations and acknowledgements. And I want to ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Michael Clark, if he would come down to the podium, and he'll join--and Michael, you can bring anybody that you want to bring with you. And he would join Councilman Luke Pretty to recognize July 2023 as National Parks and Recreation Month. So Councilman Pretty.
You also have a couple members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that are here today. And that was what I served on before being on council. So I'm glad that they'll be up here. And thank you for asking me to read this proclamation. Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the city of Roanoke, whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. Whereas, Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Whereas, Parks and Recreation programs and educational activities, such as out-of-school programs, youth sports, and environmental education, are critical to childhood development. Whereas, Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas, Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, I, Sherman Peely, Senior Mayor of the city of Roanoke, do hereby proclaim July 2023 throughout this great seven-time All-America City as Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you.
Applause.
I don't know if the director would like to make some comments and staff members from the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having us today. And as Councilman Pretty mentioned, I have a handful of folks with us today. I have Laura Riley, our landscape management coordinator, Greg Thompson, our park management coordinator, Milton Hardy, our athletics coordinator, Pat Dabbitt, our GIS specialist. We have Kathy Carter and Terry McGuire from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We also have Judy Harrison from our Friends of Mountain View group back here, a nonprofit group that helped us restore the mansion. So thank you all for your continued support of Parks and Recreation, especially over the last several years. We've been able to make investments in the park system that we haven't seen in decades, and it's truly appreciated. I think our community appreciates it. The theme this year for Parks and Recreation Month is Where Community Grows, which recognizes the programs and services that we offer that bring people together in spaces and help our community grow. So thank you all again for this, and I hope all of y'all can visit parks and such this month.
Before you leave, Mr. Clark, I would like Mr. Pretty to go over to my right, and let's get a photo here.
Michael, let me just say also that thank you for your leadership here and all of you, because you're an important part of what we're doing in this city. And I mean, you meet more people than many of us. And so you're very important, and we want to recognize you and thank you. Thank you for your commitment and dedication, and we really appreciate it. It means a lot to us as a council and to this city. So thank you so much.
Okay, and I'm over here, Mayor. I'm gonna get the picture. I just wanted to get their attention first.
I don't ever get--do we get any of these pictures back?
I, Carol, posted them on the city's website, and she does an excellent job. And yes, sir, they, we--
Okay.
So she's not--I don't see her here, so I want to make sure we capture this moment. One, two, three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you. Out of number three, Madam Clerk, is the pairing of citizens upon public matters. Do we have any citizens signed up to speak this afternoon?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two speakers, and they'll get five minutes each.
All right. Can you call them in order of them signing up?
Yes. I will have Mr. Beal Tanger first, followed by Frida Cathcart.
Councilpeople, good to see you again. Same subject, a little different. I want to thank, first of all, Councilwoman Sanchez for suggesting that we pull together a petition, our petition. And I think at that time I said we had about 60 members. You'll see the petition in your handout. Has 105 members, all businesses except for four community neighborhood watch groups. So we stopped at over 100. We thought, well, that's enough. But the important numbers regarding this petition are that we met with about 110 different businesses. Virtually everyone signed on to the petition, some with some very colorful and vehement comments about the project, first of all, which you call, you know, your name for it is Project Pipeline. So we had a lot of people who were very angry about that and about the fact that the city never reached out to anybody and that it was still on the books. So anyway, after Ms. Sanchez suggested that, it just so happened I hit a big vacation and left the country for about a month. So apologize for the delay. Also attached after the, should be after the petition, is a list of the Williamson Road Neighborhood Watch Groups and the numbers of homes they represent and numbers of people they represent and so forth. So at this point, the forum, what we call in the community forum, is representing thousands of people and over 100 businesses. But I can assure you that if we went out and got some more, we'd get 200 businesses. The important number is that 90% of the people we talked to signed on to this petition. Petition is very, very simple. It basically says you need to kill off the pipeline project and start over. We were not aware at the time of any possible funding for a start over. And then along came out of the blue this Department of Transportation grant, which we average would be about $300,000. And it seems to us that the intent and the purpose of this grant, which says it's the city's been selected to receive technical assistance, which certainly it needs that on this Williamson Road project. And it needs to have, the city needs to have support in community engagement and technical modeling. And as I think you know, we've asked for modeling of that project, and there's no reason to wait on it. If it's still on the books, let's put the modeling in and see how the community likes it. Let's use a new cones and a temporary striping. That didn't happen. This grant also says the city should strive to build authentic consensus around a vision for Williamson Road that is widely accepted by stakeholders. There is no consensus in the community. It's not accepted by stakeholders. So that, you know, that's a direct kind of poke in the eye, I would think, to city council to say, let's go back and do this over again. Let's start it over and get rid of the old thing that doesn't work. So I'm asking you again, and we'll continue to ask until something happens here. Is anyone listening? Are you guys listening to the community in Williamson Road, both residential and business? Nothing has been done to withdraw the application and start over. So I'm not going to even take my five minutes. This is a very simple message. It's long overdue. People, in my estimation, and I spent a lot of time on Williamson Road, are not only unhappy, but they're getting angrier. That's it.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Beal. I know.
I'm gonna give a little bit of information, a little bit of clarification. So I'm gonna answer actually Mr. Tanger's questions, if anyone's listening. So the grant that Mr. Tanger referred to is called Thriving Communities through the U.S. Department of Transportation. We requested that grant specifically in response to what we were hearing from the Williamson Road area. And we requested the two things that you identified, which was technical assistance in the community engagement and in the modeling. Last week was actually the kickoff meeting by USDOT for that project with all the consultant teams. So the project hasn't started. So it's coming forward. That's the effort that's coming forward. It will most certainly involve the neighborhood and the community and the businesses along that area. That's the whole purpose of that project, but it has not started yet. So I just wanted to make sure--
No, I understand that.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
No, no, it's still, it's sitting there, though, a little pot of money to start.
No, no, the pot, so the grant is actually, USDOT has actually consultant teams that they have actually entered into contracts with.
Right.
Those teams will actually come here to the community and work with us--
Okay, let me correct myself. It's a potential pot of money sitting there. The city has to continue to apply for it.
No, not that grant. No, you're talking, are you talking about the construction money that's there or are you talking about the USDOT?
The U.S. Department of Transportation--
Yeah, no, that money is already applied for and secured with the city.
Right.
That project has just kicked off, so we're just beginning to do that work. The construction money will be in the future.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm just talking about the initial money for the planning, the modeling--
Yep.
And the community consensus.
Yes, yes. And that's the project that just last week--
Right.
--USDOT kicked off.
It's going.
Yep, yep.
It just needs to get done and address this situation with--
Correct. And that's exactly what's going to take place. I just want to make sure, because the impression was that that work had been completed and we were where we are. That work hasn't even begun yet.
No, no, no. I didn't, I hope I didn't mislead anybody. That's what I'm saying. The press release is accurate as to what it provides and what the intention of it is.
Correct, correct. And that is, that is the intent of it, absolutely. That's the reason that we made the request of USDOT and were selected.
I understand that.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, Beal, thank you, man.
Uh-huh. Thank you. I'll get something done.
Well, Mayor, I do have a question. With regards to the original one for the smart scale money that the city did not get or it did not rank--
Correct.
That part of it is off the table.
That's correct. At this point, once we were denied the funding, we would have to reapply for the funding as well. So that project, right now, is, does not exist because we did not get funded.
Okay.
Well, my understanding of VDOT is that that product is live, and it will come up a year from the time that--
If we ask them to bring it back up again. Obviously, we're doing this project--
That's not, that's not what VDOT has told me. It said it automatically comes up for renewal, just like many projects do. And I hope that maybe the city would, if the city really understands this thing, would withdraw and not reapply or ask for it to be--
Well, the effort that I just mentioned with the grant is to determine what we will apply for, because as we've mentioned through this entire process, is something has to be done with the road. And you know that. I mean, you've proposed ideas and stuff as well.
I've been on the Williamson Road Business Association for 15 years, and I'm one of the people who's had some stuff done up there. I'm perfectly aware, most aware probably anybody.
But yes, that project that was currently funded is not funded. It is off, it is off the table at this moment, at this moment.
But it's still not, the city has not said, we want to dispense with that project and do away with it. It has not said that. And VDOT has not gotten that message.
Yeah. And we probably will not until we go through this next step of the process.
Well, I'm not sure. Let me put it this way. If you wait, okay, and somebody comes up with some, your planning people come up and say, well, that's a good project, then I don't care if they come up with, that's a terrible project, and you need to--
Oh, you mean if they, if they consult. Well, that'll be through the process. May I add--
I understand that. I'm part of the process too, representing the businesses and the citizens of Williamson Road area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm here in my capacity as the Soil and Water Conservation District Director, representing Roanoke City, to make you aware of the next round of grant funding is available through the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation. Over $14 million in funds is available right now to be applied for. And some of the categories is forest land preservation, historic area preservation, natural area preservation, and open spaces and parks. All of those have over $2 million worth of funding that can be applied for. The natural area preservation has over $4 million that can be applied for. These are usually done on a cost-sharing basis, about 50%, and it's to incentivize resiliency. We're getting these funds because we're recognizing, just as you all did in 2021, that we're in the middle of a climate emergency, and there are actions we need to take right now that can make a difference. I really appreciate Roanoke City funding a quarter million dollars to plant new trees. That's great. But something that you need to be aware of is that a 50-year-old sugar maple will sequester 120 times the annual amount of carbon as a 10-year-old tree. I really want to impress upon you the importance of preserving and conserving our current tree canopy. We can't plant our way out of this crisis. We have to spend time and energy with conservation and preservation. And I'd like you all to be aware of, when you're driving around, to see the ivy and the vines covering the trees. That's actually smothering them. And we need to spend money in conservation efforts. Now, there's some cities that have an urban conservation corps that go out to help prune and maintain and take care of the trees. And I would like to work with the city to see about doing initiative like that. I have reached out-- I have reached out to the sheriff, who's in the process of implementing a volunteer program with the residents that qualify at the jail to go out and do various efforts in the community, community service, and helping with the trees is one of the areas that they're looking at doing. But we, we need even more than that. We really need like, a, like, a corps, a conservation corps, to go out and, and like, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, civic groups, sororities, fraternities, many hands make light work. But I really, like, it really bothers me when I'm driving around and I see the trees covered in ivy and know that they're saying that they are being smothered, and if when we lose them, what a terrible thing that we have lost. And the trees that we plant along our streets and the backyards are not designed to grow in the light that they're being planted in, so it's really important that they're tended to appropriately and maintained. Just to make you aware that we have lost almost half of our tree canopy in the last decade, like since 2010. It's now down around 26%, and it used to be up at 48%. So, this is something that is very, very concerning. A city's tree canopy is one of the most essential tools it has to protect against heat. In the parts of the city with the least tree coverage, like the northwest part of the city, the temperature can be as much as 12 to 15 degrees hotter than others in the summer, according to an ongoing Virginia Tech study. In rural parts of the city with the least trees also tend to be the poorest, where residents are less likely to have air conditioning in their homes. The 12 to 15 extra degrees of heat in places like northwest Roanoke create massive electricity bills and huge public health concerns due to heat-related illness, according to Dr. Wiseman. So, I just wanted to make you aware that also, in the course of a year, excessive heat causes more deaths and health problems than all the other natural disasters combined. But you don't usually hear about that as much as you do, like gun violence and other issues. It's like this silent crisis that's happening that's impacting our citizenry. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention about how important it is to protect it. I was also hoping to work with like the Chamber of Commerce and educate businesses about the importance of protecting the tree canopies, and we need to educate private owners. I work really hard to maintain the trees on our property, but we've already lost three giant oak trees, even with the efforts that we have put forth, and I can tell the difference on our property from the loss of those trees. So, anyhow, I want to give this to you and look forward to working however I can to make sure that Roanoke has the resources to address this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Kent, I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask you, how do, how do they apply for the grant? Because you know, my husband, he took ivy off two trees in Huff Lane this past weekend with my grandson. So, I mean, there are people who care about that, and I know Mr. Cowell knows that I've always shown the pictures of him out there getting it off, but there needs to be a coordinated effort to do that, because it's just a massive problem. So, it sounds like there's a lot of money. How they access this money, and do they have to be a nonprofit? Well, how does that work?
So, the qual, the people that can apply for these funding is Qualified Land Trust, Virginia Indian Tribes, localities, Roanoke City, state agencies, and also Soil and Water Conservation Districts.
So, you can apply? So, you can apply? I'm just trying to figure out how, because you come here every year, and we try, can't figure out how to access this, all these millions of dollars. We're trying to figure out, how do we?
Right, so this grant round, this recent grant round of funding will close at 4 o'clock on Friday, August 18th. So, I was hoping to work with somebody before our next board meeting, it's the fourth Monday of this month, and see, like, whether the city or our district applies, but look and see, like, what we can do, some figures we can come up with. I really think that Roanoke City is primed to be eligible for these fundings, but we do need to do the work to bring the money home. So, however I can assist, I'm going to give this to you. It has links. I can send you an email with hyperlinks in it, but I really want to work with whoever to make sure that we bring as much money home, because as your husband discovered, and I have personally done, it's a lot of work, and actually, I hired a professional last year to come and do it, because what I was doing was not, like, doing...
It, it's, it's a lot. I mean, he just did it for the park, because he adopted the park and he didn't want those to die, but, but hopefully, the, the city will apply for the grant, and I'm sure Mr. Cowell, because we have someone that can apply for it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll connect, we'll connect actually urban forestry people.
Oh, okay, yeah, because it is a problem, and it's so evident throughout the city that, that they're covered with ivy. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Council, his council member, uh, White Boyd opened the door for that. What do this, what is the urban forestry doing to protect our trees in the city from the ivy and the kudzu?
That would be a, that would probably be a briefing, because what I would actually want them to do is explain their overall management practice, because not only are they doing that, they're also looking for diseased trees that they're removing or treating. Matter of fact, recently, we had a video where they had a group of folks out showing, it was actually the, the tree stewards, showing them some injections that were, they were doing around some of our trees that were actually combating some disease on those trees. So, it, it might be worth bringing, and actually, we have a joint meeting coming up with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and maybe we can actually have a small piece of that that would talk about the urban forestry practices that we have and stuff.
Because I noticed that around, even when you're driving along the interstates, you see a lot of it, and being a tree hugger that I am...
Yeah, now, they definitely would not do that. I, I can tell you how probably VDOT approaches that.
Yeah, it's all over, and I've even had to pull it off my own trees. I call them tentacles, because they tend to stick hard and try to suck the life out of the trees.
And if we, if we can't fit it in at the joint meeting, we'll schedule a separate briefing for that, but I, I think it would be...
Yeah, maybe that should be separate, because I, I think that is a topic we're talking about.
Yeah, I think having the urban forestry folks give kind of a briefing on their practices and stuff would be beneficial.
Yeah, I'd like to know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. That concludes the citizens, hearing assistance upon public matters. Before I go any further, I want to, for this council and also those that are in our audience, to meet, and I'm pleased that we have an intern that's working with us this summer in the clerk's office, Tafari Iwotz. Tafari is a senior at Patrick Henry High School, and he's a football player. That's all, in my book, that always means something. That takes you further from you that, but we're glad to have you. Thank you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you this summer. Thank you, Tafari.
So, when can we start bringing our work over for him? As soon as possible.
All right. All right, we're now down to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Our next item is our regular agenda. Public hearings, we have none. Petitions and communications, we have none, and we're now down to item seven, which is report of city officers and comments of the city manager. And we have items recommended for action. And item 71A is an amendment of the Regional Training Center Agreement to allow for a two-month extension to align the agreement with the start of the fiscal year. There is a ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute amendment number one to the memorandum of agreement with the county of Roanoke, the city of Roanoke, the city of Salem, and the town of Benton for the regional fire EMS training facility located on property owned by the county of Roanoke, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any discussion with members of council, any comments or questions? Heard none. Then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. I am pleased at this time to recognize our city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm standing up here, because I actually do have a few of them this time, and a couple of them I need this as well, and this will include some introductions as well. But first, I want to begin with two items that Councilmember Moon Reynolds requested at the beginning of the meeting. One of those deals with what we've been referring to as sort of the Hershberger lots. All are very familiar with this area, which are, is the land out by Airport and Hershberger, where we had had a series of homeless encampments, matter of fact, there's an encampment on it again right now. The city went through the process through the city attorney's office to acquire that property, which includes a detention pond that that entire development actually uses. So, we now own that property, so there are, there are two issues here with the, with mowing. One of those is on a portion of the property that we own. The other is actually on a portion of property that Lowe's owns, so the portion that's nearest to Krispy Kreme is actually owned by Lowe's. And so, Lowe's, there was a code enforcement action taken on, on Lowe's for violation of city ordinance with, with that. I had, Jeffrey went out and checked on it today, and most of it has been mowed in compliance with that code, not all of it, so we're actually having a conversation with them to make certain that they understand where their boundaries are and our boundaries, so they're, they will complete that mowing. Our portion of it will be actually contracting out those services, along with a couple of other acquired properties. We've recently acquired properties through our flood mitigation program, and we'll be contracting those out. In the interim, the stormwater management crews are actually doing the mowing, so today, if you go out there, there's been mowing along kind of the sidewalk, nearest the sidewalk, to keep that piece clear. The rest of it will be mowed when we get the contractor in place, so that's kind of an update on where those are. The homeless camp on it is actually in process of going through cleanup on it as well, and then we're actually establishing a protocol. The whole purpose of acquiring the property was really to keep the encampments from beginning, so we're actually starting a protocol where that site will be visited daily, so that if we start to see a camp getting established, we can end it at that point rather than once one has been established. So, that, that's the Hershberger update. The Huntington Boulevard, and I think, I know the mayor and the vice mayor, and I think maybe Councilmember Volason received an email back last week or two weeks ago, on the 26th, from an individual asking about the traffic signal that had been removed from Huntington. That traffic signal, if you were out there, the traffic signal had actually begun, it hangs on the wire like so many of ours do, it actually had begun to sag so as to be a danger, and so had to be removed. The reason it's sagging is because the pole that supports it is leaning. The property owner adjacent or where that pole is located so far is unwilling to allow us to install a guy wire that will allow the pole to be stabilized, which requires us to actually rework some temporarily, some of the, the light, because what we'll have to do is move more of the light off of the wire and onto kind of the pole itself, and that is expected to be completed with around a month from now. In the meantime, of course, there's, it's stop sign controlled, but it'll be about at least a month before that work's done, and really, that's only a temporary solution. The permanent solution is either we secure the ability to actually straighten the pole with the guy wire, or if unsuccessful, then your only other solution is kind of that self-supporting mast structure, which is a fairly expensive undertaking, and so we'll continue to work to see if we can actually get access to putting in the guy wire. Don't know if we'll be able to do so or not. That information was received on the 26th via email. On the 27th, the person that actually made the complaint was informed of those actions, so that response was, was back to that individual, as, and actually, I believe, the mayor, vice mayor, and councilmember Volason were copied on that response back to, to the individual as well. So, right now, that's, that's kind of the solution, but they have to rework some of the equipment in order to be able to actually put it back out there and not repeat the, the safety issue associated with it.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there, is there an option by chance not to replace the light, to, to remove it altogether?
Yeah, if you just did the, like a four-way, or the stop signs there?
No, just the, yeah, on two-way stop signs.
Yeah, just doing the stop signs. I guess we could do a warrant study to determine whether the traffic signal is...
I was wondering about that, because I just noticed the traffic seems to flow. I think it was just those in the Williamson Road area, because of the Williamson Road improvements, they just were thinking the city was trying to...
Yeah, I, I will talk with our transportation folks to see if they...
Because I noticed when I drive, drive by there, no one seems to hesitate, even at the stop sign, because I even turn on Huntington Boulevard.
Yeah, we can certainly do a warrant study and determine if the traffic signal is...
And I notice I can get out on Williamson Road a lot quicker than waiting right there for the traffic lights.
Yeah, I'll, I'll present that option to them as well, and they can go through it.
That if that's an option, that, you know, that, because 10th Street is just down a block and a half from there where there is a light.
Sure.
And with regards to the, to the mowing over there, you mentioned that the stormwater may, would be taking over some of the services, and that Lowe's would be notified of the remaining part. Do you know how long, and I'm mainly concerned about where, because there's a bus stop there.
Right.
And I see them standing with the weeds all around them.
Yeah, I think the majority, and Jeffrey, you were out there today.
Because I noticed they had, they had done the mowing on the side where the city adjoins the property, but not on the short side where there's a site clearance where they can't see as they come out.
I think that's what Lowe's has, I'm not sure what's...
Right, and I was concerned mainly about that, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Jeff White, Acting Coast Compliance Administrator, we were able to cite the Lowe's property on 629 under that weed and trash violation ordinance. I noticed today, as well as one of the inspectors in that area, that the larger portion of the parcel had been mowed to our co-satisfactory, to co-satisfaction, satisfaction. However, the smaller area just adjacent to Krispy Kreme was not mowed, so that's what we're working on now. It is possible that they just wasn't aware that, that is also included in the parcel, so we're going to make sure that that is taken care of as soon as possible.
And since they were cited on the 29th, does that mean they have, what, to July the 9th now?
Well, technically, they have seven days from the day it was cited.
Okay.
From the 29th.
Okay.
So, they still have a few more days.
Okay, so if they had been cited way before that, then they would have been obligated to cut the property by now.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. I'm just concerned about where the bus stop is, and I just noticed people staying there, and they having to stand back because, you know, you have traffic, and they're having to stand now in the weeds.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that is why, you know, code action took place to ensure that it's abated in a timely manner.
Yeah, I just, just felt that it should have been way before the 29th, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the other thing I have is...
Thank you, let me just say, thank you, sir. Good to, good to meet you.
Yeah, we always see your name and never met you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. And my last thing, Mayor, because I don't want to prolong the meeting, is I noticed along the boulevard of Hershberger from Williamson down to, almost to Otway, I think, there are several lights, and I know it's AEP, but there are several, I mean, several last, pole lights out, and I just wanted to say, I don't know who to call.
We'll, we'll add that to the list. We've been, and to AEP's credit, they, they have made significant headway on the lights that are out. As, as you all know, and we've shared this with you before, they contract for that service, and that contractor works both in Lynchburg and in Roanoke, and they've done quite a few, but we certainly continue to add to that list. I know there was some conversation about some lights that are AEP lights down here by the Amtrak platform we're going to be talking with them about as well, so we'll, we'll add that to, to the list. They've, again, they've been pretty responsive, it just takes them time to get to, to those.
I just lost count when I was starting to count.
Yeah, there were, there were some that were...
Over in the Valley View to Krispy Kreme, and then I just noticed some more, and I said, "I've lost count."
Yeah, there were some that were more out than on.
Right, and that's what I was concerned about. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And then I wanted to, a couple of items I wanted to raise, just kind of your awareness on. One of these, and we've been sharing this, this kind of information with you periodically, but I wanted to show some of these to you all. You, you know that from a couple of different sources of funding, including ARPA funding, there has been money set aside to address outdoor recreation, and that has included replacement of a number of playgrounds, and we've even been out to a couple of those. It also included a number of court restorations with these, and I just want to kind of show some of the most recent. These have just been completed in the last couple of weeks. This is the, these are the tennis courts at Belmont. This is the basketball court at Morningside. This is the footsaw court out at, at Thrasher. And these are the tennis courts at Raleigh Court. And these are the tennis courts/pickleball courts at Shrine Hill. So those are just some of the most recent ones. They're not the only ones, obviously, that have been done, and they certainly aren't the only ones that are being completed, but those, I just wanted to show you kind of the most recent work that has been completed as a part of the project that, that you all have authorized us to work on with a couple of different sources of funding as well. So I wanted to, wanted to bring that up. Also wanted to, as long as the volume works for this, I wanted to actually indulge your time for three minutes. Some of you may have already seen this, but as you know, Doug Jackson's been here sharing with you over the course of the last year, the year of the artists, and then most recently, they've been involved in a series of video productions in partnership with the Roanoke Cultural Endowment that actually highlight the different ways in which arts play an, or play a role and have an impact in our community. The most recent one actually was oriented around the role arts play in economic development. And if you go on to that show, there's about 20 minutes in total of, of all, all kinds of information associated with that, but as a part of that, there was actually a, a song created in a video, music video created as a part of this, that's then being used as part of our economic development as well as visitor promotional activities for, for the community. Brian Hancock and JP Powell were the two artists involved along, you'll see in this video, a whole host of other artists that were a part of this, and it's really designed to show a side of the community which is really art-driven, but that has an impact on, on economic development. It's referred to as "It's Here" is the name of the video, and hopefully, we'll see if, we'll, we'll see if it actually has sound, so we'll see. And hopefully, not too much sound. And all of that was produced locally. Those were all local folks, all local performers, and of course, in the case of JP and Brian, not only are they local musicians, they're also small business owners. Of course, JP owns a couple of restaurants, Brian has a whole collection of enterprises that he is involved in as well. So again, this is information that will be used as we continue to market the community, but from a unique way in which it shows not only a quality of life, but also a, a way in which the arts play a role in economic development here in our community.
Very nice, very good.
And there's a lot of really good information on that video, the full video, if you get to see it. And also, there is, as a part of that effort, there's a call-out for artists that I think closes on July 12th. All that information is out on the Art Commission and the Cultural Endowment's webpage, and certainly want to thank the Cultural Endowment for their support of, of this effort as well. So, thank you. I, I would like now to actually make a couple of introductions. So we have, every once in a while, we get the opportunity to share with you folks that have taken on new roles or have joined our organization, and today is, is one of those days. So I want to actually start with Ross Campbell. Ross, if you wouldn't mind coming up. So Ross is our new Director of Public Works. Ross, I think last week, right, was the, the first?
Yes, sir.
The first, the first week. So Ross is actually joining us after a long and hopefully fruitful career with the U.S. Navy. He retired as a commander, at the rank of commander from the U.S. Navy, and his most recent assignment that he's coming here to us from was he was the Public Works Director at Camp Lejeune. So that's where he has been over the last, I guess, four or five years in that, in that timeframe. And there, he was responsible for overseeing 400 civilian professionals, 25 military, and 150 contract personnel, over a 300-square-mile municipality that included 5,000 residential homes, four public schools, multiple parks, rails-to-trails, a trauma hospital, and an annual operating budget of $150 million plus a $280 million capital budget. And that was just his last assignment. He has also been stationed at, as an operations officer in California, as well as having spent other time in Norfolk, Virginia, at the base as well. Ross had, holds a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in civil engineering, and is now APE-registered in Virginia as well. He was registered in Maryland before, but successfully secured all of what was necessary to, to do that as well. And he and his family joined us again last week here in the community, and we're very happy to have Ross here as well. So Ross, anything you'd like to say?
I'm, I'm excited to join the team here, and am very much looking forward to serving this council and you, Mr. Mary, Mayor, and, and all the endeavors that happen here in the city of Roanoke, and continuing to make it a great place to live and work.
Well, thank you, Ross. It's good to have you here, and we look forward to, to working with you as we go forward.
Wonderful. And Tim and I do have an inside joke that we sort of chuckle about, because, you know, as I mentioned, Ross, of course, retired at the rank of commander in, in the Navy, and Doug Barber, who is, of course, in the city attorney's office, similarly retired from the Navy at rank of commander. So we now have two, two former commanders from the Navy that are actually here, so we're going to try to keep them apart as much as we can. Thank you, Ross.
All right, thank you, welcome.
And you will, we have a, there's no such thing as a former Marine?
That is true.
But we have a Marine down in Risk Management who handles...
That's true, handling our safety.
Our safety.
That is correct, that is correct. I'd also like to ask Chief Roman, Chief Roman, Sam Roman?
Sam, what do I ask?
To come up. So it's kind of, it feels a little odd to introduce Sam to you, but certainly will do so, because today is actually Sam's first day in his new role with the city as one of our assistant city managers. And so he is, his portfolio includes Ross's group, and so will include all of the public works functions, as well as a couple of others in, in that portfolio as well. So Sam has already, even before he started, he's already been out on a few tours of the Public Works Service Center. He remarked to me this morning that even though he has worked here for 30 years, in that one day, he saw things that he had never seen before as, as a police chief. So certainly getting exposed to a different side of the organization than he had been able to do so before, and very much happy to have Sam here in the office in this new, new role and new capacity as well. Sam.
It was good to meet you all. I've never seen you before. I'm very excited, as is Ross, to join the team in this capacity, and I too look forward to working, you know, with you all, as well as Bob, in a slightly different capacity. So thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Sam.
Well, Sam, it's going to be a while before we start, at least while I start calling you chief.
Yeah, I, I told him, we still, I, I never even served it with Chief Perkins, and I still call him Chief Perkins, so...
We've still called him Chief.
Once a chief, always a chief, so. I'd actually like to ask Deputy Chief Stokes to come up here as well. So Deputy Chief Stokes is, today is his first day as the, the acting or interim police chief, and with Sam's departure, and as we go through the recruitment process, of course, we need somebody to step into that role. We have two deputy chiefs. Jerry has agreed, agreed, I don't know if that's the right word, right? He has agreed to, to help us out in that capacity. Jerry's relatively new here, as you know, he's been here about four months, a little over four months. He served as the chief, prior to this, the chief of police in Salisbury, North Carolina. So that's where he retired from and then joined us over here as well. And, and I do need to make a correction from this morning, because this morning I had asked, when, when asked about, how did we know that Jerry was that person? Apparently, only in my head did I actually provide that update to you all. So even though I've been updating you for months on the process for the recruitment, I did not indicate who the, who the selection was for, for the interim. I did send out an email to the, the folks that I have assembled for the panel for the interview that were going on to let them know we had moved toward, I didn't actually identify Jerry, I just said one of the assistant chiefs, so I do apologize for, for that oversight, and fortunately had Jerry scheduled to come here, so I thought, well, even better, we're going to let you actually. I know most of you have already met Jerry previously as well, but certainly anything...
Yes, sir, thank you. It's a pleasure, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, to be here to kind of formally meet you in a kind of a double role, new role for me. So as Mr. Cowell mentioned, I'm relatively new here, but this is certainly an honor, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to serve as interim chief, and look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Gary, it's good to have you. Let me say that I formerly was on the Board of Trustees, they live in Stone College.
Oh, wow.
Down in Salisbury, so I've been down there several times.
Okay, yeah.
They're part of the...
Great institution.
Yeah, that's all, anyway.
And if you want the world to get even smaller, the former city manager in Salisbury was involved in recruiting Jerry here, as well as recruiting Clarence away, so, so it all goes right back to Salisbury.
I got you.
That's the, that's the key here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I'd actually like to ask Angie to come up to introduce another new member of our, of our leadership team.
So it is my honor to, to introduce you all to the new Director of Human and Social Services from a fellow long-term employee with the, the organization. This is Gwendolyn Coleman, who is our, our new director. Gwen started working for the city of Roanoke in 2005, and has held a variety of positions in family services, such as the family service specialist, family service supervisor, with a focus on domestic violence and child protective services. In recent years, from 2021 to the present, well, on, she started here June 12th, right?
Yes.
Yes. Gwen was working in Fulton County, Georgia, from a similar role that she departed the organization for. Gwen holds two bachelor's degrees, one in criminal justice, one in human services counseling. She has a lean practitioner certification from Virginia Tech, and she's served on several professional organizations such as Family Violence Coordinating Council, the Council of Community Services, Roanoke Valley Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, Families Violence Coordinating Council, and many others. And Gwen started with the organization again on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. So we're very excited and honored that Gwen is back with the organization.
All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity for me to come back home and plan to retire by serving the citizens of Roanoke. Thank you.
Good, thank you. It's good to have you back, and we'll be working with you quite often, I can tell you. I promise you, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now I know where to find you, so I could give you your book back. I was going to ask you to go backwards.
Thank you. And, and Mayor, last but not least, I'd actually ask Chris Chittam to come up. Chris doesn't know, but I was going to ask him to come up. I did ask him to be here at the meeting. As you know, as you all know, Chris has been with the city for over 20 years, and most recently, Chris has been serving, depending on your term here, as either our first cohort or guinea pig, take, take your choice of what it is. But we started a, an apprentice program in the city manager's office as a part of our organizational succession plans, which is designed to equip some of our senior leaders to be able to step into a role of an assistant city manager in, in the event that we have an opening over time or, or other purposes, and also, in the interim, strengthen their roles in the organization in their, in their current capacity as well. And again, Chris is the first to complete that. So Chris has, for the past two years, been positioned in the CMO's office. He's been receiving mentoring, coaching, training, as well as executive level assignments, those, and also has served on the executive team for things such as the Budget Committee, and has had an expanded portfolio as well. During his tenure, Chris has, so in that two years, Chris has revamped the CIP process. He's been in front of you all giving presentations on that during the budget process to increase transparency and coordination. He initiated an organization-wide succession planning effort, which you'll be hearing more about that, because he's still working through, through that process, and also has led, led the city's efforts at addressing affordable housing and eviction avoidance, and, and is currently coordinating the Evan Spring Master Plan process. Also during his tenure, he applied for and was accepted into the International City Manager, City County Managers Association Credentialed Manager Program as a, as a candidate. So what that essentially means is he meets the criteria, now he is just required to have a couple of years more experience, and then he will be a credentialed manager as well, which I think actually you may, at that point, be only the second. I'm credentialed, and you may be the only second in the organization at that, at that point. He has also passed all the necessary actions to be an accredited member of the Congress of the New Urbanism, and so you'll see a new, some new initials end up after his name here shortly with time. He's also been able to support during those two years Jillian Papa-Moore, who also during this process had the opportunity to serve as the Acting Director of Planning, Building, and Development, also building her skill set and her experience as, as she has worked through that. Chris will now continue his service to the city as the executive, the longest title ever, so, the Executive Director of Community Development and Placemaking, where he will continue to direct the Department of Planning, Building, and Development, but also now will include coordination of work and efforts of the Economic Development Department, Arts and Culture, and Sustainability. So we've actually tried to concentrate some of these departments that actually play a better, a better, bigger role in community development and placemaking, and those will all fall under Chris's direction. Chris himself will actually be reporting up through Angie in, in that portfolio group. Chris will also continue to be a member of the executive team, so he'll be still attending the weekly meetings. He can't get out of those, even though he's moving back downstairs. He can't get out of the weekly meetings, and he will continue to serve on the Budget Committee. So I wanted this opportunity to acknowledge the work that Chris has done in those two years, the additional skill set that he has acquired through that process, and what we've learned through the process that will make the next folks coming through all the more successful. The next cohort, or the next individual coming, will come in January, and it's actually Angela Vernon, who is the, the Director of HR. Angie was in the program and then was selected to go into the ACM, and of course, we had another individual, David Gwen, who was in our fire department, who actually recently left the city for private employment, and so Angela was the next one in there, and then I'll determine whether we'll actually add another cohort as we go through. My goal was to have about five individuals all together go through this program over the course of several years as we work our way through that as well. So wanted to acknowledge that and give you an opportunity to say anything you would like.
Well, I really don't have a speech or anything, but I, I, I do want to thank Bob for that opportunity, that I've learned so much over the past couple of years, and will help me, hopefully, I, I contributed over those two years, but also in my coming years, it'll enrich my understanding of, of how things work. So be able to, really looking forward to kind of aligning and coordinating the work of planning, building, and development and economic development. So those are, so I think I can probably help both do a better job in that role, so thank you.
Chris, how long have you been with the city?
I'm in my 29th year right now.
Okay, I know you've been around as long as I've been.
I, I, I started as a, in the neighborhood office, as a neighborhood planner. That was my first job here, and I loved it, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, still here.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
And thank you, Mayor, that is my, my update, and thank you for indulging me on, on those items as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before the man, you go ahead. Oh, Bob, I just wanted to say, because of so many organizational changes you've had and you've restructured, could you provide us with a copy of your new structure?
Sure, sure.
At least for me.
Yeah.
I would know who answers to whom.
Yeah, I would say what I'll do is actually identify the, rather than just the structure that has kind of the positions, I'll actually identify who they are in those positions.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be good, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, we on eight, I don't know, eight?
Eight, one, yes.
Okay, eight, one, which is reports of committees. Eight, one is a report of the Economic Development Authority recommending issuance of revenue bonds not to exceed 10.5 million for Virginia Lutheran Homes Incorporated in connection with the expansion of Brandon Oaks located at 3804 Brandon Avenue. S.W. Harwell, M. Dobby, Jr., Counsel to the Economic Development Authority. Is Mr. Dobby here?
Nope, I think we have someone in his place.
Okay. I'll call on you for some remarks. We, well, really, we got a resolution to get a motion.
Resolution, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title of paragraph?
Yes, sir. A resolution...
"A Resolution Approving Solely For The Purposes Of Section 147-F Of The Internal Revenue Code of 1986 As Amended And Section 15.2-4906 Of The Industrial Development And Revenue Bond Act, Chapter 49, Title 15.2, Code of Virginia of 1950 As Amended. The issuance of bonds in the amount of $10,500,000 by the Economic Development Authority of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, for the purposes of refinancing the cost of various projects and benefited Virginia Lutheran Homes, Inc., a Virginia non-stock corporation, and providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Ma'am, is there any comments that you would like to make?
Sure, I just would like to summarize a few portions of the resolution. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Caroline Perrin, and I'm here on behalf of McGuire Woods as bond counsel to the transaction, and I'm also accompanied by a representative of Glenn Feldman today as well. And so we are, as summarized, we're seeking the city council's approval of a refinancing of the Roanoke authorities' bonds in the amount of $10,500,000, the proceeds of which originally financed projects at Virginia Lutheran Homes Brandon Oaks facilities. And because the facilities are located in the city of Roanoke, federal and state law require that we seek the council's approval of the bond issuance, and we did a similar approval process in 2022 for other debt associated with the Brandon Oak facilities. And the resolution, the only things being approved in the resolution are, as I just described, and to satisfy the legal requirements of federal and state law, and they do not constitute an issuance of debt or an additional financing on behalf of the city of Roanoke or the Roanoke EDA. And with that, I will hand it back over to the council and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. We're now down to the point of discussion, and I want to ask my colleagues, if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here today. I know that this talks about some, does this also address some future expansion, or some expansion that's currently underway for Roanoke?
So this will not have anything to do with any expansion happening. It's just a refinancing.
Okay, thank you.
So all existing projects.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, it does, the measure does say in connection with the expansion of Brandon Oaks, so is that, that's not accurate, or it's just refinancing? Because it does say expansion in the wording.
I believe it's intended that the original financing was in connection with the expansion of Brandon Oaks.
Oh, okay, okay, maybe we're just misinterpreting it.
Yeah, and that is accurate. The original, that this is refinancing, is indeed for the expansion, and those efforts and those projects will continue to go forward. And so it's carrying that same language over as it gets refinanced.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, I could see why Vice Mayor would say, would ask that question because that's the way it reads, but thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, of course.
And the only thing I would clarify, and I know you all know this, but it certainly is worth saying, is obviously with this being a transaction that the Economic Development Authority is helping actually occur, the city is, the city, you all, we're not issuing any additional debt. This does not affect our, any of our debt limits or any other items associated with our debt policy. This is a separate action, but it does require council action the way the state code reads.
Oh, I was just curious if there would be an expansion, just, you know.
Yeah, and there is tied to the original, just not another expansion.
Not another one, right, okay.
All right, Madam Clerk, ready to call over?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number nine is unfinished business. Nine, one is an ordinance number 42694, on second reading exempting from real estate taxation certain property located in the city of Roanoke owned by PCC Land Company, LLC, whose sole member is Presbyterian Community Center, Inc., a Virginia non-stock, nonprofit corporation. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
An ordinance exempting from real estate property taxation certain real property located in the city of Roanoke owned by PCC Land Company, LLC, whose sole member is Presbyterian Community Center, Inc., a Virginia non-stock, nonprofit corporation dedicated, devoted, I'm sorry, devoted exclusively to charitable and benevolent purposes on a nonprofit basis and providing for an effective date.
We both approved of last time, this is second reading.
Yes.
All right, any discussions or comments or anything you want to say, Ms. Spencer?
Just one thing, because it's a second reading, because we normally, as we approve these, they become effective, this one's all the unique that it becomes effective as of July 1st this year.
All right. Yeah. All right, Madam Clerk, please call over.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
President.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number 10 is the introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ten, one, a resolution to support the use of the royalty affirmation as a messaging tool for the youth of the city of Roanoke in an effort to curb gun violence. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, could you please read this in its entirety?
Yes, I will. "A resolution adopting the royalty affirmation as the official affirmation statement for the city of Roanoke, whereas the city of Roanoke is currently experiencing a high level of gun violence within the community, within our community. Whereas, a majority of both perpetrators and victims of gun violence are young people within our city. Whereas, by adopting an affirmation that exemplifies the positive potential in every young person can speak this affirmation into existence. And whereas, it is the goal of the city to embrace our youth with a positive and helpful vision for themselves and thus blunt the destruction, destructive impacts caused by gun violence. Therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Roanoke as follows. City council hereby adopts the attached royalty affirmation as the official affirmation statement for the city of Roanoke. Two, the city manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary, including the execution of a copyright agreement approved as to form by the city attorney to make the royalty affirmation the official affirmation statement for the city of Roanoke. Three, the resolution shall be effective upon passage."
Thank you. Well, I'm pleased to recognize a longtime educator with us, Mr. Fleckel Nichols, if he wants to have comments on this, along with Chris Roberts, who are back in the chamber. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's yours.
I just have a quick question. Mr. Cowell, seems like we, this is deja vu, I thought we had done this before, do we have to do it every year, or what?
Yeah, Mr. Nichols had made a presentation, actually, with Antonio Stovall when he was here.
How long ago was that? In September.
Yeah, I would say, it was some time back, and...
We didn't do it. We didn't do it, oh, okay, I was like, is this deja vu or what?
Yeah, it was an introduction of it.
That was done and gone, but that's good.
Yeah, and at that time, I think in conversation with Antonio and Mr. Nichols, they had held back on actually bringing it forward. I think then there was an interest in making sure that it gets approved prior to the beginning of the school year, so that's why it is coming forward again.
Oh, thank you.
This is actually the first time it's coming forward for action.
Oh, okay, I knew we heard the presentation, and I thought we had done it, and I thought, well, do we have to do it again every year or something? Thank you for clearing that up for me.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I appreciate, again, the opportunity to stand before you. Yes, it was almost a year ago that we initially presented this, but I'm glad that, for whatever reason, today is the day, and are appreciative of the opportunity to share this affirmation with you. If you'd like to know a little bit about why Chris and I think this is so important, as my mother used to say years ago, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and this affirmation is something that would be put forth as a preventative measure rather than a reactive measure. As, since I've been working with Chris, and we've been on the front line and talking with young people who are already in the system, and who've already been tagged for guns, possession of guns, and those types of things, we realized that the journey to gun violence, many times we think it just happened this weekend, but it was a lifelong journey to that point where either the gun was picked up by the young person, or the person was at the other end of the gun. It is disconcerting when we have an opportunity to sit in front of those families before and after, and when I say before, I mean as you sit before the action may happen, you find out that this action was not something that just came like that. You find out that there's been a lot of trauma and a lot of distress, and so by the time the chief of police stands on a street corner, and the corner comes, and the body lies there, and the, it's circled, there's a chalk line around it, there's so much more to it. And so this affirmation is one, only a small portion of what we can do in order to make sure that young people affirm themselves, not as they are 13 or 14 or 15 years old, but as elementary school students, as they began to say, "My name is," and they tell who they are and why they are here. And that's why this affirmation is so important. It's been a while coming, it's taken a year, and while the year has passed, there have been bodies that have been dropping in the streets, and there are also, I mean, it hurts me to my heart to know that this is happening, but this is one of the small things that we feel will prevent. I beseech you, I plead with the city council and all people who have anything to do with it, that when something comes before you as expedient as possible, get it done if it will prevent another person from dying on the streets. These children are all our children, and they affect us when they leave this earth. A doctor may be laying on the street, a lawyer, someone who solves a major problem in this world, may be laid in the street because we did not take time to be preventative rather than reactionary. So that's why it's so important, and that's why it means so much to me today, after this long period of being educator, to finally have an opportunity to give something back to Roanoke City that I think will be permanent, and if it's used in the way that we want it to be used at every corner that someone turns, there's a poster that has this affirmation on it, every shopping center, every place where people shop, every place where people stop, they can stop and affirm themselves day in and day out, and know that they're worthy, and that they can solve a problem without using a gun. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Roberts, you got any thoughts?
No, no, he said it best.
Okay. Any council, have any?
No, thank you. Thank you for bringing it forward.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you.
Both of you, yes, thank you.
Madam Clerk, ready to call over?
All right. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. All right, item number 11 is motions and miscellaneous business inquiries and comments by the mayor and members of the city council. Let me just start this off by saying that I thought we had a good week with the Miss Virginia Pageant in our city. I think it was well-attended. I'd like to see more attendance there, hopefully, as we begin to build this up. It's good to have it back in Roanoke, because as most of you know, it left Fort Pitter time and went to Lynchburg, and so, but I had a chance to be a part of it, to go backstage and bring the flowers off for Miss Virginia and Miss Teenage Virginia, and it was very special to see the young ladies and their parents be involved in this process, and I was really impressed by it, and so I want to thank the folks at the Bergland Center and the Hotel Roanoke and the other hotels that accommodated the parents and were just really helped us make this a successful event, and I was pleased to be there with the young ladies who are so talented, so many talented young ladies from across, this is Commonwealth. They came and presented well, so I want to commend the city for its support. Bob, and the thing that we did, and we worked out some kinks, and we want to try to do it again and make it big. I want, hopefully, we can keep this for a while here, but it's a good event with young people, young ladies, who really performed, and I was just proud to be a part of it, representing the city, and I want to thank the Vice Mayor who was there, and Councilwoman Moon was there on Saturday night, we had a front seat right up front, and I'll tell you, it was entertaining. Very entertaining. So anyway, I just wanted to report that back to saying, hey, it's a good event, and thank Roanoke for doing its part, and we're looking for bigger and better things as we have entered, we enter into the third year of having the Miss Virginia Pageant back in our star city. All right, any other comments?
I have just an inquiry.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask Mr. Cowell and Ms. O'Brien, maybe, not this meeting, but the next meeting, to give us an update on the EAB. I just want to know where we are and how we're chugging along. So I won't put you on the spot today.
That should be fine, because I believe this week, right, is, we're hoping to have their kind of reorganization meeting, so yes, we can do that, the next meeting.
The next meeting, that'd be perfect. I'd love to hear how we're coming along, and let me know if you need me.
Okay, is that?
That was it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. It's just a couple of things for the city manager. I received concerns about the scooters that are being left in the neighborhoods at residences. I wanted, I just wanted, from my understanding, what is the protocol or policy for that? I believe the one, the complaint I got was the scooter had been there for three days. There was three of them at a neighborhood, I mean, at a residence in the neighborhood. One had been moved, but the other two were still there. They contacted, I think, the company, and as of yesterday, the company had not responded back, so they wanted to know what is the city's role in that, what should be done, how that should be handled.
Okay, yeah, and I...
So you could just get back, I don't know, you don't know the answer.
Yeah, I'll have Chris actually send what is the approach. Basically, the idea is, of course, they're supposed to come pick them up so they can recharge them.
Right.
Then there's a process if they are not following the protocol that we can put in place.
And the last thing is, I had a conversation the other day with a gentleman about the Mill Mountain Star. I recall seeing something on Facebook some time back about the lighting, and I don't know where we're at with that, so if you could give us, maybe, even just for me, maybe the others know, and I don't.
Yeah, there's really no, and I can do this update pretty quickly, because actually I spoke to it a couple of months ago, I think, when the stories, stories came out all over the place, that we were, you know, contemplating replacing it and all these others, and so as was indicated at that time, the, structurally, the star remains in actually fairly remarkable condition, given its age. The challenge has always been with the lighting and the neon tubing, and the difficulty in keeping it up to date, making repairs, those types of things, and so I believe there was going to be a conversation with the Mill Mountain Advisory Committee, as well as the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, just to kind of talk further about it. The end result, whatever it might be, will ultimately have to come before you all as a part of our CIP discussions, because the dollars that would be involved, either in retrofitting large portions of it, or if there was a desire to change it to some other kind of lighting, all of those would be at a cost that would rise up to a CIP cost with it. So what I will find out is if those conversations have taken place with those boards and committees, and kind of what, you probably won't hear a whole lot till we get into the development of the budget. and, uh, and, and kind of what, you probably won't hear a whole lot till we get into the development of the budget in the CIP, um, as we move into the next, into the next year, but I can certainly at least find that piece out.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're down to item two, which is vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. Uh, I'd like for us to come out of closed meeting, certify a closed meeting, and then we'll proceed with that. So is there a motion from any of the ones here on the desk?
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Thank you. The second.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, thank you. And I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor now to share with us, uh, uh, those positions, people that were appointed or reappointed to certain authorities, boards, and commissions, uh, by council, and, um, once he does that, uh, once he places those names in nomination, if we are supportive, if by seeing all nominees, if you support, if you support that seeing all nominees. And so with that, I will, uh, ask the Vice Mayor to share with us those appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Roanoke Cultural Endowment Board of Directors, the appointment of Victoria Thornton to fill the unexpired term of office for Cheryl Mosley, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And for the Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority, the appointment of Herbert Burding to fill the unexpired term of office for Thomas Reyes, ending February third, twenty twenty-six.
All right. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, well, those that are in favor of that, can you let it be known by the saying of all nominees?
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
All nominees.
Mr. Pretty.
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd.
All nominees.
Mr. Volison.
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee.
All nominees. Thank you. All right, uh, there being no further business to come for this council, the council meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.